Yes, ma'am.
We'll call it order tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for April the 2nd, 2024. The council should have the minutes from the committee of the whole of March the 19th, or any additions or corrections of those minutes, if not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Second? Have a motion as second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved, the committee of the whole on March the 19th. We have a number of board appointments tonight. The first is Historic Preservation Commission. This is the responsibility of the mayor to make the nominations. We have two positions open tonight. One incumbent, Ms. Laura Rayburn, has decided not to pursue a second term. So tonight, I'd like to nominate Mr. Dan Bush for her seat. Second? Have a motion as second for Mr. Dan Bush. Any conversation or thoughts?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'd like to speak on behalf of Mr. Bush. Dan Bush is a longtime Auburn native, whose experiences go back even further than my own. Dan is a graduate of Auburn Elementary School, Auburn High School, and Auburn University. He also earned an MBA from Sanford in Birmingham. Professionally, he had a 33-year career as an engineer at Alabama Power and Southern Company, and then he returned to Auburn in 2002 and moved back into the family home on North College Street in the historic district. Dan was there when the North Auburn Historic District was established, and he understands the design review standards of that area. And we would be blessed to have Dan on Auburn's Historic Review Committee. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other comments, thoughts on Mr. Dan Bush? Okay. All right, we have a motion as second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll confirm Mr. Bush later on in the agenda. We appreciate his desire to serve. The second incumbent is Nick Hayes. Mr. Hayes has served one partial term and one full term, and I'd like to nominate Mr. Hayes for a second full term.
Second.
All right, have a motion as second for Mr. Hayes for a second full term. Any comments or questions, thoughts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have some.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to remind the council that we had a council meeting on the 17th of October, and we had citizen input on that regarding offensive and vulgar banners being hung on various properties for the Auburn and Georgia football game. One of those properties is owned by the nominee. Fortunately, the signs were removed thanks to the intervention of Councilwoman Whitten. The intervention, however, was after a concerned citizen spoke with the nominee, and whose reply was, quote, "Freedom of speech, War Eagle." This response is not indicative of someone who cares about the historic district or citizens' concerns. It was said at the meeting that we don't need the F-word in front yards, and while we want to protect free speech, we also need to maintain decency. This occurrence was not meeting minimum standards. Mayor Anders spoke up, saying, "To read these signs was very unfortunate and disappointing," unquote, and also noting that, quote, "Children witnessed and read them," quote. Additionally, the property is generally unkept and unsightly. We are fortunate this property is not on North College Street, where it would be on one of our major gateways. When we appoint a board or commission member, they represent us, the council, and also the citizenry of Auburn. And while we usually reappoint members, it is also an opportunity for course correction if needed. So anyone who owns property in the district and even has a modicum of interest in its preservation would not allow this. We have two excellent applicants for these vacancies, one of which we fill with Dan Bush, and I urge the mayor to withdraw the second nominee. I do not believe the nominee should be affirmed.
Thank you. Mr. Griswold?
Yes.
Anyone else have a comment or?
I have a short one.
Sure.
Another one of the nominees has served a term on this same committee. It was back under Mayor Hamm in 2014, 2018. I guess I should mention the name on that, but that is one of the qualifications that was put forth by the nominee that's on the floor.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts or comments?
Well, I would like to acknowledge that I think Mr. Hayes, in his time on the Historic Preservation Commission, I would like to call into question, has he made any votes or had any actions within his role on the commission that have been a detriment to the commission or to the city? And I would probably, the answer is no, he has not. And so, his fact that he has tenants and residents that I know he's had multiple conversations with, and those tenants change on a regular basis, and he's, he and I have had multiple conversations. So I acknowledge that that lot is a problematic lot as far as the tenants in there, but that is not Mr. Hayes himself. And I would say that if his actions on the Historic Preservation Commission warrant him not being reappointed, that's one thing. The actions of his tenants are not the actions of Mr. Hayes.
Thank you, Ms. Whitten. Anybody else like to say anything?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I can't speak about what Mr. Hayes chooses to do outside his role as a member of the Historic Commission, but what I am more interested and supportive of is precedent. And the precedent that this council has adopted over the course of my tenure here has ensured that people who are running for a second term get the opportunity for that second term. So that will be where my focus lays in supporting the idea that an incumbent gets a second shot.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Parsons? Anyone else? Okay. We'll try to do this by voice vote. If we need to, we can raise hands. Would that be okay, if we believe it'd be a split vote?
For pleasure.
Okay. So, all in favor of Mr. Nick Hayes, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I believe that was five, four.
You may want to do hands, just to...
Okay.
Lindsay has to be able to record who...
Sure. All right. All in favor of Mr. Hayes, please raise your right hand.
That's all you need to do, because it's five or affirmed.
Okay. We'll confirm that later on in the agenda. All right, downtown design review. Ms. Whitten?
Yes, sir. We have one position. Term begins April 18, 2024, and ends April 17, 2030. Incumbent David Henson has served one full term, and he has reapplied, and I would like to nominate David Henson to a second full term.
Second. Have a motion as second to nominate David Henson to a second full term. Any comments or questions? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, and we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. Auburn Public Library.
Yes, sir. We have one position. Term begins April 15, 2024, and ends April 14, 2028. Incumbent Marcia Boosinger has served one full term. I would like to nominate Marcia Boosinger for a second full term.
Second.
Have a motion as second for Marcia Boosinger to serve a second full term. Any comments or questions? I do, Mr. Mayor. Please. Yep.
Ms. Boosinger has been a very capable leader of the Auburn Public Library Board. She has brought a wealth of knowledge and experience with her into this position. As a past Associate Dean of Library Sciences for the Auburn University Main Campus and AUM, it would be hard to find anyone with better credentials. However, and more importantly, I believe she cares about not just the public library itself, but the Auburn community, especially those young families who use the library in large numbers. I trust in Ms. Boosinger to keep the best interest of these young families in mind, as well as the interest of the community at large. I thank her for wanting to serve her community in this very important capacity, and I pray for her success.
Thank you, Mr. Mormon. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, I would like to say something about Ms. Boosinger. I actually worked with Ms. Boosinger at the Auburn University Library for about 12 years, and I don't think she knows anything else but the library. So I support her in her second term on this library board.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor of reappointing Marcia Boosinger for a second full term, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we'll confirm it later on in the agenda. Cemetery Advisory Board.
Yes, sir. We have one position. Term begins April 15, 2024, and ends April 14, 2028. Incumbent Mabel Robinson has served one full term. Ms. Robinson has not chosen to serve a second full term. I would like to nominate Doris Ann Hutchinson.
Second.
All right. Have a motion as second for Doris Ann Hutchinson. Any comments or thoughts?
Well, I think Ms. Doris, once again, I've been knowing Doris all my life, and I think she, you know, knows the cemetery pretty well, especially that one over at Westview Cemetery. So I think she would serve as a good access to the Cemetery Advisory Board.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just quickly, I'd like to speak on her behalf as well. The things in her application just jumped out at you. She's looking for a way to serve the Auburn community in a positive way, and president of willing workers at her church, and just several things like that. Just speak to her ability to want to make a difference.
True. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion as second for Doris Ann Hutchinson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and we'll confirm that later on in the agenda. Questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Any questions? Ms. Crouch, anything for us?
Yes, we have one item that has been removed, and it is under ordinances, number 9B franchise agreement with Dixie Electric Cooperative. They just need a little more time, so I didn't want to even ask you to do first reading. We'll move that to the April 16th agenda, and it'll appear first reading then.
Okay. All right. Is there a move to adjourn the committee of the whole? So moved. All right, we have a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole. It is six minutes after six, and we'll move right into our regular Auburn City Council meeting. Lindsay, with the roll call.
Adams?
Here.
Coblenz?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Mormon?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Whitten?
Here.
Anders?
Here. Which please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, then remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. It is the first meeting of the month, and we'll begin by recognizing our Employee of the Month, as well as our other employees with service awards.
Stand by.
Hey, you're running. Greg's not turning red either. He just... Nobody's staring at you, Greg. That's all right.
We're proud today to introduce you to our April Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here from Chris Graff, our Deputy Chief Information Officer, and Greg Nelson, our Chief Information Officer, introducing you to our Employee of the Month. Leadership at all levels is a hallmark of a high-performing organization. Jennifer McKibben demonstrates that leadership. As the IT GIS technician, Jen serves the mapping needs of many departments. In that role, she fosters teamwork and camaraderie, and through her discipline, has creative value for the city. One of Jen's duties is coordinating the FEMA Community Ratings Program. This program seeks to reduce citizen losses from flooding. To manage this program, Jen coordinates with multiple departments, keeping track of how engineering, construction, and public education reduce flood risk. Jen encourages staff to contribute by aligning their work and the goals of the program. Through that work, Jen has streamlined multiple processes in record-keeping, and through her leadership, has created a safer community. Continuing to build a safer community, Public Safety's Communications Division identified a need to more quickly locate 911 callers on Chihuahua State Parks, many trails. Jen led a team from IT, Public Safety, and the State Park Service, and other interest groups to align the parks' trails, points of interest, and mile markers with the city's 911 software. While technically complex, the real work was building a shared vision with the stakeholders. From Jen's work, we now have a model to reuse for golf courses and other large parks. While accomplishing the aforementioned work, Jen still found time to earn her GISB certification, the highest certification for a GIS professional. It is because of her unique ability to engage and encourage, and her discipline in leading her peers to do their very best work, that Jennifer McKibben has earned the Employee of the Month. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. Thank you. of the Month, and we're certainly thankful for all of our other employees that were recognized tonight with their service awards, and all the best to John Reese and Brian Wood as they move on through retirement. And we thank all of them for everything they do on behalf of the citizens of Auburn to make Auburn a better place. Auburn University Communications.
Good afternoon, y'all.
Good afternoon.
Got a couple of updates for you guys this evening. The SEC food fight kicks off this Friday. It's a friendly competition between all SEC schools to raise the most donated food items. Last year, Auburn raised over $70,000 to support the Auburn campus food pantry. We hope to win the competition for the fourth year in a row upon its conclusion April 18th. In other news, the college Democrats and Republicans are having their great debate tonight in the library. I am having the pleasure, or displeasure, rather, of moderating this debate, so we're looking forward to seeing what comes out of that.
Hope you do better than those people on television, Dave.
Yeah, yeah. I hope so. I'm looking forward to it. We're going to be discussing a lot of the recent bills coming out of the state legislature, school choice, anti-DIA legislation that's also a big deal, and other foreign policy topics as well. And finally, new cabinet positions have been announced. I'm excited to be continuing as the Director of City Relations next year. I've learned a lot in my role over the last year, just about city council in general, and I'm excited to continue that into the next year as well. We're having our first cabinet meeting next week, so we'll introduce you to the new team of external affairs and everything like that, and I'll certainly be in contact with you about upcoming events. But that's all for me this week. War Eagle.
Good. War Eagle, thank you very much. All right, this time is citizens communications on items on tonight's agenda. I will point you to, there are no public hearings tonight, so if you'd like to speak to the city council about anything that's on our agenda now, it would be the time for you to come forward and share with us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe we skipped...
Announcements.
...committee of the whole in announcements.
We sure did. Thank you very much. Well, remember everything I just said to you, okay? During the committee hall, we did have a number of board appointments. The city council appointed Dan Bush to the Historic Preservation Commission. The city council decided to reappoint Nick Hayes to the Historic Preservation Commission. The city council reappointed David Henson to the Downtown Design Review Committee. The city council reappointed Ms. Marcia Boosinger to the Auburn Public Library, and the city council appointed Doris Ann Hutchinson to the Cemetery Advisory Board. And there was one item removed from our agenda tonight. That item is 9B. Okay? All right. Now, again, if you'd like to speak to the city council about anything on the agenda tonight...
Mayor?
Six in a row. Announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I'd like to remind the public that the Auburn Outstanding Tree Awards are open. Ward six has pulled it off for the last two years. You better step your game up a little bit, and so you can nominate your favorite tree in your particular ward on the city's website at the Outstanding Tree Award Nominations, and it's open until the 21st.
Anyone else have an announcement?
I have one, if I may.
Please, yeah.
I would just like to thank the watershed division for putting out markers to identify local watersheds in Camden Ridge this past, I believe it was last weekend. Had over 50 volunteers, and those markers helped to identify how our storm drains lead to our waterways, and how what enters our storm drains. It's very important to know that those go into our local creeks, streams, and waterways as well. So thank you again to the watershed division for leading those efforts.
Anyone else? Okay. Would anyone like to speak to the city council about anything on our agenda tonight? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll move ahead with city manager's communications, as long as that's all right. Is that okay?
Yes, it is. Just checking. As you already mentioned, item 9B has been withdrawn from the agenda, but in better news, I'd like to introduce, we have two new department heads. They are not new to the city of Auburn. We have Allison Hall. She's our Parks and Recreation Director. She only left us for a brief four-year stint in Dothen. Had a great time there, but Auburn is best, and she has returned, and I'm thrilled to introduce her. Allison, please stand up, for those who don't know you, and, you know, you can wave to the crowd. There you go. Nice and embarrassing. And then, we also have our Human Resources Director, Alinda Dinar. She was a fire captain and elevated to our Human Resources Director position. Kristen Reader is still in and out of the building for about another month, and then you won't be seeing her, Alinda. So, there's Alinda. And she can drag you out of a burning building. It is very possible. So, from an HR standpoint, our employees know that, and so they will not mess with her. So, I'm thrilled. You know, justice came a few months before then, but we have a great management team. I have been fortunate that we have great applicants and great people that want to pursue management roles, and I wouldn't want to do this with any other group of people other than the management team that's in this room. So, I'm grateful, and I'm grateful to have both of these women in these roles at this time. So if you're ready, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Please.
Does any council member have an item they wish to remove from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
8D1 and 8D2, please.
8D1 and 8D2.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
8E Echo four?
8E four. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, we'll start with 8D1.
Item 8D1 accepts various public easements from Cam Real Estate LLC for the redivision of Lot 1A1 and Lot 1A2 of Walker Carlton subdivision, a redivision of Lot 1A.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Mr. Coblenz?
I just wish to abstain from this vote.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 8D2 accepts various public easements from Catbird LLC for property located at 120 South Ross Street.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. We have a motion as second. Mr. Coblenz?
Again, just abstaining.
Any other comments or questions from the council? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 8D4 appoints Dan Bush and Nick Hayes to the Historic Preservation Commission for terms that began April 21st and end April 20th, 2027.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion as second. Mr. Griswold?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to divide this for the two vacancies. I just need to voice my opposition to the second appointee. Since it's all part of the consent agenda, I don't want to approve the consent agenda and have that go unrecognized.
Okay, sure. Anyone else?
Mr. Griswold, are you trying to divide the question? Do you want to vote on them separately, or what is your... Are you just voicing opposition?
I'm just voicing opposition to the second vacancy, to the second nominee.
Since the motion is to approve both, Ms. Crouch, is that...
Yeah, unless you're dividing the question, you're just going to vote on this as is.
Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right. That was three, I believe.
Who was the third?
Ms. Taylor.
Mr. Griswold.
Chief Dawson. Correct. Okay. Okay. Do I have a move to approve the balance of the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Ordinances.
Item 9A1 enacts the annual renewal of ad valorem taxes for city taxes, five mils for general purposes for the general fund, and five mils for capital projects debt repayment, known as the special five-mil tax. Council must annually renew the property taxes to authorize the Lee County Revenue Commissioner to assess city property taxes. This is a renewal of existing taxes. These are not new taxes or tax increases. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? All right, hearing none. Any comments or questions from the dais? Yes, sir, Mr. Griswold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I had an opportunity to speak with Dr. Herring the other day, and asked her about the level of support the city provides. She's very complimentary, and says that the new high school will not require additional taxes, provided the city was able to maintain this level of support. So I think that's a good thing.
Anyone else?
Just a point that was, that I gleaned about a year ago on this, and city manager reinforced that for me this week. Not only are these not new taxes, but these have been renewed every year for a very long time. Some of these date back to the late 1800s, and that's pretty easy math. We, or somebody like us, has renewed the... We've, we or somebody like us has renewed these for over 100 times, I guess. And these, as you pointed out, are all property taxes, and no other type of taxes are involved. And because of that fact, I would like to point out that we are one of the lowest property tax states and counties and cities, I think, that's my opinion, in the country. So we are blessed to live in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Mormon.
As we all know.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward. Lindsey, with the roll call.
Mormon.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9A2 enacts the annual renewal of ad valorem taxes for school taxes, 11 mils for educational purposes, known as the special school tax fund. Council must annually renew the property taxes to authorize the Lee County Revenue Commissioner to assess city property taxes. Again, this is a renewal of existing taxes. These are not new taxes or tax increases. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hear none. Any comments or questions? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten? Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9A3 enacts the annual renewal of ad valorem taxes for school taxes, five mils for educational purposes. Council must annually renew the property taxes to authorize the Lee County Revenue Commissioner to assess city property taxes. And again, this is not a renewal of existing taxes. These are not new taxes or tax increases. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Does anyone in the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening?
I don't have a problem with moving forward, but I do like to ask the question, because both of them saying the same thing, but one just say 11 mil and 5 mil. What's the difference?
Two separate, they were adopted at two separate times. Anything different than that?
No.
No, so they said that it's 16 mils combined of property taxes that go directly to Auburn City Schools and sit in a fund where they can draw for educational purposes. Do you have anything else to add, Allison?
No, just that two different taxes that were enacted at two different times.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Lindsey?
Taylor?
Yes.
Witten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9B has been removed from the agenda and be on the April 16th agenda. You ready for resolutions?
Please.
Item 10A adopts and authorizes the Community Development Block Grant Program 2024 Annual Action Plan.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions from the dais?
I think I just got one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is 2024 Annual Action Plan, Action Plan. Can you kind of explain that to the...
Yeah, I'll have Mr. Davis, our Community Services Director, give an overview. There's a consolidated plan, and within the consolidated plan, there are five years of action plans, and he'll go over that with you.
Okay.
No, you're fine, you don't have to push.
All right, it's okay.
No, they're live.
All right.
The, each year, the city has, the council has to adopt our Annual Action Plan. The action plan before you tonight is the last of the five-year action plans that were adopted as part of our 2020, 2020, 2024 Consolidated Plan. So next year, we'll come with a new Consolidated Plan, and we'll start the whole five-year process over. But you're required each year to adopt the plan. HUD requires that the US Department of Housing and Urban Development requires the council to approve it. Our plans for use of the monies, starting in June 1st of this year, and this action plan goes through May 31st of next year.
Mr. Davis, the Consolidated Plan identifies general needs in the community, and the action plan is the way in which, from the annual allocations, we get from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, is how we implement it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, Al. I know that, I just wanted, I just want everybody else to know, that's listening.
No problem.
Because people ask, you know, those type of questions. But thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I have a question.
Sure.
Under Family Services, it says discipline, accountability, commitment. What is that?
Let me see which one you're looking at.
It's on page three or four, about midway down the page, six, only six thousandths. I'm just curious what it is.
It is a new nonprofit. We're very happy to be able to include a new organization to our funding cycle this year. They will be providing some after-school programming and some other assistance to families. They will operate from true deliverance, but they're a brand-new organization, and we have setted them very carefully. We think they add a lot of value to our program.
So it's an outside agency?
They are all nonprofits. You have to be a nonprofit to get funding through the CDBG program, it's just a new nonprofit.
This is separated from our outside agency funding that runs through the regular budget.
Okay, thank you.
So is this, this the name of the nonprofit, or...
This is the name of nonprofit.
Oh, okay.
It's Aubrey Reese Organization.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? All right, this is a resolution, so we have a motion in a second, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Sure. At this time, it's Citizens' Open Forum. If you'd like to address city council about anything, we ask that you please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak, and we ask that your comments be directed to the council.
I participated in the hazardous waste forgiveness. I think it was 604 when I got up there.
You name and address.
I'm sorry. Robert Wilkins, 261 Denton Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Anyway, it was a great program. I had like four, five-gallon containers of chemicals and two 1-gallons. So thank y'all for having that. Today, I want to talk about the word BUT. The definition is to use, introduce a phrase or clause contrasting that what has already been mentioned. We citizens are given time limits and guidelines that you put up every meeting. But the mayor and Northern City Council have any guidelines or time limits. Councilman Parsons, for example, can rudely interrupt Ms. Shumpf multiple times since there's no control or guideline. Ms. Shumpf has a right to speak about protecting the kids. I'm in support of that protection. Y'all are able to rebuttal after we speak, but we citizens are not. We should be given at least a minute rebuttal time that this council can take unlimited time and unlimited response. You mayor received 188% raise from the city council, but you voted against the city council getting any kind of much-needed raise. Ordinance 3288 was passed, but no data was provided to make a proper decision. Only Councilwoman Taylor has ward meetings, but you, the seven councilmen's members do not, including my own ward.
That's not true.
Is that true?
That's not true.
I'm sorry, you have them?
Yes, sir.
Pretty often?
Yes, sir.
Sorry about that.
I actually started them, thank you.
Oh, good, good, thank you, thank you. Hope all of you will take, take bath in Conde's place, so I appreciate it. Thanks for correcting me, I like to be corrected.
Yes, sir.
Because I am, I am wrong sometimes. Are you, that's it there. I brought up an issue a few months ago in Ward 1 concerning the police, but instead of having a concern setting up a meeting with the mayor, city manager, chief of police, councilwoman Taylor, and her others, Mayor Anders and councilman Dawson, lambasted me. Nearly one and a half years have passed since the Auburn City Council voted 22 million for Lake Wilmore, but three to four times, the practice facilities are needed. Many volunteers, coaches, concerning citizens state that their practices, practice in parking lots, practice on basketball courts with 14 sharing, play in an old landfill with hills on the football field. A quote from one citizen, "We are better than that." I agree. Why build a Taj Mahal or another sportsplex in the area? I will be happy to provide my lifetime skills of working with local, state, and national projects by involving the local community to develop a financial and needs plan, to act to supercharge the youth recreational facilities. Since my days in children's home, I've always enjoyed paying it forward. Thank you.
Who will be next?
Hello, Martha Shumpf, 307 Camellia Drive. How far is the earth from the moon? NASA says it's about 238,855 miles. Yet man has gotten up there. Now Mr. Elon Musk wants to go farther. He wants to go to Mars. Mars is about 35 million miles from the earth, but man has landed machines on it, rovers to explore the surface. The closest star to us, according to Caltech, is about 20 trillion, 25 trillion, 300 billion miles away from us, while the farthest stars are billions of times farther than that. What is a star? It's a huge sphere of very hot glowing gas that makes its own light and energy by nuclear fusion. The gas is mostly hydrogen and helium, the two lightest elements. The stars shine as they burn their hydrogen into helium. Nobody knows exactly how many stars there are in the universe, there are billions and billions of them. Our own galaxy, the Milky Way, has several hundred billion stars. There are billions of other galaxies beyond ours which have as many or more. True Christians worship the God who placed them there. He reveals himself as Yahweh or Jehovah, Elohim, Adonai, in the Bible, and sent his son as a messenger in the person of Jesus Christ to teach us. He determines what is right and wrong. Jehovah God says homosexuality is wrong. These cheap books at our Auburn library say it's right. Who am I to believe? I know who I believe. I believe the God who made the stars, the earth, all mankind, the seas, and everything in the universe. But many of the twisted books in the library are unworthy of our library. They teach lies, and if you would like to see them, I have a whole bag full, which is just the tip of the iceberg, out of my car tonight. I will show anybody who wants to see what I have been talking about now for more than a year. They still remain. Let's worship the God who knows what's right and wrong. He made us all, the stars included. Thank you.
Who will be next?
Hello, I'm Sarah King Collins, 875 Cohaba Drive, I'm one of yours. I've been in Auburn for a number of years now, but I am just recently settled in my house, and I've been wanting to get involved in the community. I've gone back and listened to a couple months' worth of city council meetings, and I just wanted to come and say thank you for all that you do. It's really impressive to me what y'all do to set our city up for success. I have studied urban design, it's not my main field of study, but it's a passion of mine, and to see zoning things in place, preserving historic neighborhoods, filling in developments, is really encouraging. Things that I have questions about are, I've got a map of the bicycle lanes and proposed bicycle lanes, pedestrian infrastructure, whatnot, but I can't seem to find information for implementation of that and things of that nature. I typically walk to and from my house. I've had tendonitis last month, haven't been able to do that, so I've been scootering back and forth down North College, and it is a little bit of a terrifying experience. So, just interested in finding out how, what plans there are, what implementation is coming down the road, and then also, I would really love to get involved, and I'm going to be a regular face here in the future. So thank you for all you do, and I'm looking forward to getting more involved.
Thank you very much. Who will be next? Anyone? Okay, we'll close this period of Citizens' Open Forum. Anyone in the council have anything they'd like to say?
I want to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Martin Luther King, the New Streetscape over there, I think I sent an email to you, Megan, about the, a light that was damaged, the pole and everything. So I see where they did actually remove the light, but is it going to be replaced?
It would definitely be replaced. Unfortunately, the individual who struck multiple poles does not have any insurance, so that will be the city's responsibility to replace. We hadn't even accepted the road yet. I'll ask the city engineer, there's a long lead time on lights, I don't know when we can, she or the public works director can help me, but it will be replaced. Our timing of replacement, I don't know if we've even been able to order yet.
Don't know yet.
We're still waiting on some legal things to shake down, and then, we will, or yes, it will absolutely be replaced. Anytime our decorative lights get hit, it's a little bit worse. We've had a few accidents in the last week that have taken out also on our traffic signals. They have the, the black decorative traffic signals have a thing at the bottom called a skirt, which sounds kind of funny. We've lost a few skirts in the last week, that happens, and they kind of make it look prettier at the bottom. And so, we keep some of these things in inventory when they're common sizes, but fabrication has been difficult. So yes, they will be replaced, they're a priority for us to get ordered, but we cannot guarantee what lead time we have right now.
So is it one or two?
It's two. And the reason for removal, you had definitely reached out and, you know, said we had some electrical conduit exposed, and we had a lot of twisted metal. Unfortunately, the individual that damaged them was okay, and they fell asleep, that's the extent of it, and they're fine, but at the end of the day, it takes a while, and the twisted metal wasn't looking too good, so we removed it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Are temporary lights available, just on a wooden pole or something to alleviate the safety concerns?
It's well lit.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it just looked funny, you know, because...
Because all of a sudden, it's not, yeah. Yes, yes.
But it's well lit.
It's very similar to the lighting we have on Opa-locka Road, right by the post office and Frank Brown Recreation Center.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to Ms. Collins' inquiries about...
Sure, yeah.
Infrastructure and so on.
Go ahead.
I think if you pay attention to, you probably already are a subscriber to our email chain that comes out. I think you can pay attention to that. You'll see, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, you'll see information about 2040 plans and teams coming up.
Absolutely.
So there will be an opportunity for you to, to, to be a part of some type of team that piques your interest within our city and, and welcome to our city. And I think you'll find all of, all of the council members are very approachable and just shout out if you want to have a meet and be happy to talk to you.
Anyone else? Before we end, first of all, I want to ask, tell the city manager, thank you for the railroad ties. They're no longer there and that has been a nuisance to a few of our citizens and.
Got so used to them. They blended in. That's right.
And they're gone and whoever participated in making that happen, we're grateful.
I would like to thank a number of people. The city engineer finally got us connected with the right people at CSX who said, get rid of them. And then Public Works, our Public Services Executive Director, Environmental Services, a lot of departments were involved. They're actually a little bit stored right now on our property elsewhere. Shall remain nameless where they are, in a secure location, but we will be disposing of them soon. The city would not be using them, but they will, they will go away.